I will now call the Elyria School Board of Education meeting for October 21 to order. Madam Treasurer, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick, Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin.
Here.
Will you please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will have introductions. To my farthest right, we have board member Elaine Segwin. We have, to my right, we have board member Jim Bax. I am vice president Annie Karstoffen. And to my left, we have board member Mike Gebhardt. And then we have superintendent Anne Sloss. And we have treasurer Joy Clickinger. Do we have board recognitions? No board recognition tonight. We have presentations for this evening. At this time, we will receive, we will receive Tim Brown. And we have someone else coming with Tim Brown. But, oh, here it is. We have Tim Brown and Julie Oak. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Board Vice President Karstoffen, members of the Board of Education. It's our privilege to present to you tonight the newest change in graduation requirements for high school seniors, the readiness seals.
Oh, now it's working better, right?
Yeah.
Marty's got it. Does he need me to start over?
No, we don't.
The process actually started over a year ago. And Ms. Oak has done a fabulous job working with members of our staff, the district, as well as the local school communities in Lorain County, as we set up the new seals that kind of comes in place. If you remember, a few years ago, we went from the OGT test to the end-of-course tests, and there was kind of that strange transition period. And we're there again with, some of our kids are still under end-of-course tests, but now our 10th and 9th grade students have the readiness seals. So that's what Ms. Oak is going to present to you now, and we'll be around for any questions.
Good evening. These actually, they came about with, a lot of the educators in Ohio wanted something more than just testing for kids to graduate. So our 11th and 12th graders are still under the 18 points with just the testing scores. The 9th and 10th graders are what they call permanent requirements. Then the 11th and 12th graders are allowed to use the permanent requirements, but most of them are going to be okay with the 18 points. Just to kind of review what the requirements are, first of all, and this hasn't changed, is the 21 credits to graduate. And that's on the first, if it was up here, it'd be the first slide, but it's on the first page. Kids still have to have the 21 credits to graduate. That has not changed. The next thing that they would need to graduate are the competency scores. This is new for the 9th and 10th graders. They came up with a score of a 684 in algebra or a 684 in English Language Arts II. And again, just a review, because things change a lot. The current 11th and 12th graders are taking seven end-of-course exams. Now, the 9th and 10th graders still are required to take the exams, but the two that they have to take and pass with a competency score are the Algebra I and English Language Arts II, which we currently have, we've had those for years. That equates to about a two on the test. Kids can get anywhere between a one and a five on the test to get their 18 points. So that part hasn't changed. It's still the same test that we've always had, the Algebra I, English Language Arts II. Algebra I is usually going to be taken by the kids in 9th grade, and English Language Arts II corresponds with the English 10, so they would take that in 10th grade. Now, if kids are having a hard time with testing and they aren't able, by the time that they are seniors, to get the 684 in Algebra or English Language Arts, there are three other options for them. And that's on the second page. Option one would mostly be for kids in the JVS. This is not something we can do in the high school, because they have to get something under the foundational part, right there where it says web exams, that's JVS. A 12-point industry credential, that is also JVS, in a pre-apprenticeship program. So with the kids that I'm dealing with in the high school, JVS counselors would be looking at that for the kids that are Elyria kids in the JVS. So option two is if the kids enlist in the military. And again, this is if they don't get the competency scores in Algebra and English Language Arts. And then the third option, again, if they didn't get their competency scores, is if they pass the corresponding math class in CCP, or if they get the CCP English credit, then they wouldn't have to have the competency score. Any questions on that? All right. And then this takes us to the graduation seals. And this is the part where, again, the educators in Ohio, we want something more than just testing for kids. We want them to show that they are ready for the workforce, they're ready to go to college. Whatever they choose, whatever path they choose, what else can they show besides test scores? And that's where the seals came in. And you'll notice on the page, it says "Ohio" in parentheses, because the state came up with their own seals, that the kids would have to get one Ohio seal, they have to get two total, but one Ohio, and then they can pick one local, they can get two Ohio seals, but one of the seals have to be one of the Ohio seals that every kid in Ohio would have to get. The three seals on the bottom that say "local" are the ones that we came up with, with a committee of teachers, and those are the ones that we're focusing on tonight. So the local seals, one of them is a community service seal, one is the fine and performing arts seal, and one was the student engagement seal. Just, I just saw you guys, on the Ohio seals, there's still two of those that are tied to a test, and that would be the science and the citizenship seal. So the kids are still taking the tests. I mean, they want to know, are we still responsible to take all of these tests? It looks good to say, oh, it's just the Algebra and the ELA II, but in order to get a seal, they still have to take the test for citizenship and science. We are no longer given the geometry test or the English Language Arts I, so those are gone. The next page shows where, in Power School, this is how we track the seals. This is a screen that we are able to see, the counselors are able to see, for every child that is a 9th and 10th grader. And you'll notice where it says core credits. So if I were a counselor or a principal, and I clicked on that, I would see all the credits that the student has, because, again, they still have to get their 21 credits. The competency are the grades that they had for the English Language Arts II test and the Algebra test. So those would be in there. And then if you clicked on readiness, and that would take you to the next page, it will show you all of the seals. Every student is automatically going to be taking the citizenship and the science test, so that will be an automatic checkmark in there. That will be a seal that they will work towards. And if they get a three on those tests, then that seal would be checkmarked that it's finished. And again, it's just they have to do two seals. One has to be Ohio, and then they can choose another one. The local seals, the community service, student engagement, and fine and performing arts are on the bottom. And personally, I think a lot of our kids are going to be able to get those when we look at the seals that we agreed on. Now, the next page, I just wanted to give you an overview of the process that we went through to come up with the seals. Last August, we were informed by the Ohio Department of Education that we were responsible for three of this local seals, that every school can decide what they want those to look like. So once we found that out, I'm a, I go to the JVS for these Lorain County principal meetings. So I meet with the principals about once every other month in Lorain County. And we have an email chain that when we ask questions with each other. So we all shared the seals that we were coming up with, to make sure we were kind of all on the same page of what we wanted for the seals. So Keystone, Brookside, Wellington, Firelands, Avon Lake, we were sharing what we had. Then we took those seals, and we had a committee of the department chairs at the high school. And we brought all those into a meeting, and we were looking at those, and we said, okay, what would be good for our Elyria students? And then we came up with the seals that are on the last page. One was under fine and performing arts seal. And again, we looked at what other schools were doing to inform our decision. And we came up with the following. In order for a student to earn a fine and performing arts seal, one of the following must be met. A student can earn a B or higher in the two semesters of an art course, or they can get a B or higher in one semester of a fine arts course and participate in one school performance. And again, our kids are required to at least have one credit of a fine art when they graduate. So that is going to cover a lot of the kids, anyway. If they're in choir, or they're in drama, and they're in a play, they would be able to get that seal. If the kids are, "I'm not going to get on stage, and I don't want to be in the choir," community service seal. This is where they can do 30 or more hours of community service, and this starts when they're freshmen. So this isn't all something that they would have to do when they're seniors. But they would do 30 more hours of verified community service that would be approved by a designee of the administration, and preapproval is recommended. The service hours must also be done outside of scheduled classes, because we want the kids to work in the community and get their hours. And lastly is the student engagement seal, and I personally think this is where a lot of our kids will be able to get something, because a lot of our kids are involved in sports and clubs. So this one would be for kids that are in sports. If they're in two full seasons of any school-sponsored sport, bowling, cheerleading, football, two seasons, they don't have to be the same sport, then they would be able to get the seal. And lastly, they would participate in one full year of activities or meetings of a school-sponsored club or organization. And then that would have to be verified by the advisor. So that's what we came up with. This will start, again, for our 9th and 10th graders, and we want to meet with the kids, we have a lot of kids. I mean, we have, if you think about it, 1,000 kids. We would want to meet with them, like, go to their class with a counselor, explain to them what the seals are, and start the discussion of, this is what's required of you when you graduate, let's start looking at this, what do you want to do for your seals? And then we are going to send a letter home to the parents, to let them know, this is what's required, because, again, it's confusing. We can't leave this up to the parents to just say, here you go, figure it out. We are very good with all of the counselors and the principals, with talking to the parents and making sure that they understand what's required when the kids graduate, because things are changing so much with testing, and they're seeing that, and it's confusing. So to have them just say, here, read this and figure it out, we're not going to do that. We let the kids know what they need, we'll send a letter home to the parents, and then we will update the parents and let them know where their kids are at with the seals. And the last thing, talking with Meta, who does Power School, we want to have a screen where the parents can get on there and look at graduation pathways and see where the kids are at, as far as test scores and their seals, so that it's not a surprise when the child's a senior. But again, we, you know, we'll have lots of help along the way with counselors and principals and teachers.
Did you say it's juniors and seniors aren't going to do it now?
Juniors and seniors are still under technically the old system of 18 points. Now, what the state did this year because of COVID is, they're allowing grade substitutions right now for test scores. So if a student was required to take a test last spring, or they're supposed to be taking a retest because they don't have their 18 points, we are currently allowed to use the grade that they had, like in U.S. history, as a test score. And every school in Ohio is doing that right now as we speak. And it's looking really good for our kids.
Just a question. I know the football team, they're raking leaves. Would that be considered community service?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Would you be partnering with religious organizations, or, you know, like, so that the kids could maybe help clean the facilities or governmental entities? I know sometimes we see youth that are maybe cleaning the garage or something like that. Is that something that you would be doing?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. That's great.
And there's even a component, if you looked at, one of the seals is the Ohio Means Job seal. That one also is, you have to have a mentor, and it doesn't have to be a job where you get money. So a mentor could be the preacher, it could be the youth pastor, so that would work for that one, too.
Wonderful.
Julie, if, if a student had his or her 21 credits, okay, would they, just as, just by default, qualify for some of these seals, or do they have to have seals to graduate if they have their 21 credits?
They do. They have to have two seals.
They have to have, okay, they have to have two.
And the seals, again, are supposed to be more towards readiness for work or jobs. They wanted to add something besides the testing. They're two separate. Academic grades and credits are different than the, the science test and the citizenship is tied to a test, and that's a seal. I think a lot of our kids will get that.
Okay. But you said you just need two?
Yes.
So if you took, and you said everybody had to take the citizens and the science?
Yes.
So if they pass those, then they don't need anything else?
Yep.
But they have to take those?
They have to pass with the three, yes.
Okay.
I would think the majority of our kids will probably end up with 10 or 12 of these earned. They only need two, and they'll only be recognized for two, but they'll accomplish most of the things that are on the list.
Like, what are the citizens? What, what do you have to do for that?
For the citizenship seal, it's the end-of-course test.
For U.S. history and American government.
Oh, okay.
So just to make, so you need the 21 hours, and then you need the competency, and if you were not able to pass it, you have to do one of these three things.
Yes.
Plus the two seals.
Yes.
Correct.
And we are, we do retakes every December, spring, so the kids will have a lot of chances to keep taking those tests and do better. We do remediation. We have tutoring available for all the tests.
I think to the point Mr. Bax made, and it was a great point, like, a kid just taking 21 classes, right now in our graduation requirement, they have to have one fine arts credit. As long as they earned a B both semesters of their fine arts credit, they've earned the seal. So that's not even doing anything else. It's just part of what they need to earn to graduate from high school.
But if they got a C both semesters, they wouldn't get it.
Correct. So they still have to be scholarly in their subject area to a B level. But there's also that participation thing. If they don't want the credit, kids could be in a musical production, a play, that's not necessarily a separate class that they earn a credit in, but they could get credit in it if they wanted to use that as one of their seals. But they would still be needing to get another half-credit of fine arts. They may have got a C in it, that counts towards graduation credits, but it wouldn't be able to be used for their seal credit.
And then if I understand, if I understand correctly, if you've accomplished your 21 credits, then you've probably, you probably by default would almost, would certainly qualify for the citizenship seal and the science seal? Is that, is that what you said?
No, because that's tied to an end-of-course exam.
Oh, okay.
That's an end-of-course exam. It's a U.S. history and a government test, and then the biology test. And you would have to get a three on those tests.
Okay.
You have to show proficiency.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Principal Brown and Associate Principal Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good job. It is my understanding that we have no visitors signed up tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. The board minutes have been posted. I'm sorry, do we have any board member discussions, first of all?
Let me just have one question.
Okay.
Ely, those rocks that are out there, what's going to happen to those?
The rocks, the boulders. Right now, we've, we've taken the ones that we wanted around, I shouldn't say, we, Brian has put them and worked with the maintenance department. I know Dave Stahl from AECom, they're getting ready to move them. The rain has hindered that a bit. They're working with Mr. Brubaker from the city to move those elsewhere. Mr. Kokai wasn't able to be here. I can find out exactly where they're going for you.
I just wondered.
But, yeah, they're going to be moved. We actually, they're beautiful. At the beginning, we only had a couple, so we said, we'd like to keep a few for decorative purposes, because they are so beautiful. But then, as they kept digging in the parking lot, we ended up with a ton of them. So we used the ones we needed for decoration, and now we have too many. And Mr. Brubaker had some ideas, so I know they were working with the city on placing them elsewhere.
So that all came out of the parking lot?
I believe.
Wow.
Underneath the ground somewhere.
Anyone else?
Speaking of Ely, I don't know if you noticed, the address is going to be hidden by those plants.
We did talk to them about, they did plant those little, and I'm not a green thumb at all.
Yeah.
Whatever those bushes are, they're moving them.
Okay.
Back. Right. We talked to them, the landscapers are going to be moving them back, they're too close to the sign, and they're going to hide too much of the sign, so they are going to be relocated.
There we go.
Okay. Just things you probably don't think of, you know, when you're doing.
No, no, but we noticed, yes, it's pretty, but if they grow, we're in trouble.
Okay. Nothing else? The minutes have been posted, and I believe everyone has had the opportunity to read over the minutes. Could I please have a motion to?
Some.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Elaine? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G is Treasurer Action Items.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, I just have the monthly financial reports. We have a donation. And then we also have the motion to approve the purchase orders according to the district
That being all, I would entertain a motion to receive the Treasurer Action Items as recommended by the Treasurer as presented.
Move to approve the Treasurer's action items.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussions? None? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Motion carries. H is Treasurer's Other.
I do not have anything.
No others?
No.
Treasurer's Report.
I am, I'm done, yeah.
Nothing? Okay. OFCC or OSFC or Sports Complex?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Bax has a report.
Yeah, just a couple of updates on construction. The punch list details continue to be worked on at both Ely Hamilton and Northwood. Those are details from move-ins, and those can be damaged walls from furniture moves or various things that have not, that showed up as we were moving in. Those continue to be worked on. Secondly, in terms of construction, both continue, both the Westwood and Eastern Heights campuses continue. That construction continues at a fairly strong pace. It's expected to have the Eastern Heights campus completely under roof in time for winter interior work, okay, when we can actually heat the inside of the building and allow that to go on. However, it's unlikely that all the entirety of the Westwood campus will be under roof by then. It could happen, but it's looking not, it's looking unlikely, put it that way. It could be that certain sections of the campus will be under roof, and if they can be isolated properly, those could be heated, those could be heated artificially, and some interior work could continue there. But we're just going to have to wait and see how the progress with the roof comes. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Do you have any other, do you have any questions? Particular questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any other board members have questions? Okay. If not, thank you for that report. Moving on to item K, which is Superintendent Action Items.
Thank you, Mrs. Karstoffen. First of all, we'd like to ask for the approval of the Elyria High School local seals, as detailed in our presentation tonight. Also, to approve the Mercy Health and Recreation Center swim agreement where our swim team practices. And that concludes my action items.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the Superintendent Action Item as recommended by the Superintendent?
Motion to approve.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Where are they practicing?
Out at the Mercy Health, it's right off Oak Point.
Oh, okay, in order, all right.
None other? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Motion carries. Superintendent Other?
Thank you, first of all, to approve the resignation agreement between the board and Ms. Candice Thomas. Also, to approve the retirement of the following certified staff. Mr. Raiber from the high school, he's a language arts teacher who's been here 27 years. I believe his only other assignment other than the high school was Eastern Heights. He just missed me. I was, you're supposed to laugh, Mr. Gebhardt. All right, thank you.
There you go.
Also, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff below. To approve the resignation of the supplemental contracts below from certified staff. To approve the supplemental contracts of the following certified staff. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts of the following certified classified and non-employees as detailed below. To approve the following OHSAA tournament game workers for athletic services, for tournaments, for soccer and volleyball. To approve the following game workers for athletics. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff member. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff as detailed below. And that concludes my personnel action items.
May I please have a motion to approve the personnel actions recommended by the Superintendent?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Elaine. Any discussions?
Yeah. You have on here Matt Saworka as head boys' basketball coach. You also have Brett Lerrick as head, I think, does that?
Well, that is a typo. My apologies, Mr. Gebhardt. Matt Saworka is the, one of the assistants' boys' coaches at Elyria High.
Oh, I thought he was like junior high, or no, never, never mind.
No, he is an assistant coach. That is an incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah. So if I could have that amended to assistant coach.
Okay. He would like that.
I'm sure he would. Not at that pay grade. So we'll amend that. Thank you.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay, so where are we then? At the roll? Are we at the roll now? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Motion carries. And other personnel item, other personnel items?
None, but I do have a Superintendent's report.
Okay, Superintendent's report, thank you.
All right. As you know, tomorrow, the groundbreaking is canceled. It's a kind of a, a bit of a lake out there from all the rains, so we're going to postpone It's a kind of a, a bit of a lake out there from all the rains, so we're going to postpone it. We'll let you know when to reschedule that. We want to make it special, so we don't want to do its justice. Also, today, we had a wonderful professional development given by academic services, but mainly by four of the high school staff. Amanda Belcher, Amanda Picorni, Troy Hill, and Betsy Trump on anti-racism and equity in education, which is continuing our work this year, on the topic of equity in education to 50, it was about 40, 40 of our staff members that are going to be the facilitators in the buildings when the presentation is given on November 3 throughout the district. So it was wonderful. We learned a lot, a lot of great discussion, and we look forward to that continuing dialogue. Also, just as we all know, the, over the last week or two, the numbers with the coronavirus have risen, and we've been getting a lot of calls. Just so you all know, we are working as hard as ever to keep everything safe, clean, do our due diligence. The maintenance crew, the teachers, the classified staff, the administrators are doing everything they can to assure that everyone is as safe as can be. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to your building leadership or your teacher. But I just wanted to put it out there that we're continuing doing what we need to do, and we will always continue the dialogue. Yesterday, I believe, our latest newsletter went out with some tips and things. I guess the best thing to remember is always to keep the masks on when you're close to people, and do what we can to keep Ohio safe. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Anne, I got a question. On your, going back to the discussion you just had on, with the Professional Development Day and the equity, I assume there's a committee?
Yes. We had a group of teachers and administrators that, and classified staff, and actually outside, the Urban League was part of it. We had, we've worked with the Diversity Center from Cleveland, also has been working with the high school and the middle school. But we started this summer when really the topic rose to the center of a lot of attention. But I have to say, we started a lot of this work a few years back at the high school with the Diversity Center and Mr. Anthony, and have started to, we've actually even had students present to staff on many of the topics over the last few years. And this is a continuance of that, but we had kind of a training for the facilitators today that will be in each building guiding the discussion.
Do you expect, do you expect to have any, I'm going to call it a report out, or periodic updates from this committee?
Sure.
And would those, would those be available to the board?
Absolutely. That's a great, great idea. We, this November, November 3 actually, is the first really big professional development for the entire staff on it. And I think that would be great, maybe at the late November, early December meeting, to have a report out on how that went. I'll work with Natalie on getting that to the board. Some of our, we were hoping to be further ahead right now, because of obvious reasons, we've had to change how we're doing things a little bit. We didn't have, we had to use some of the PD days before school to do training for staff on the hybrid model that we had set up, but we had some speakers lined up that we wanted to bring in. But absolutely, Mr. Bax, we will set that up.
I guess I would be, I would be interested in policy revisions and the, and structural changes, if there are any of those. You know, if, you know, I mean, we can, we could have presentations, and everybody could, you know, listen to, you know, some presentations and do a lot of things. But I, you know, I guess I would like to see what, what is filtered down into the organization in terms of what physical changes have we made?
Well, you know, it's funny you bring that up, Mr. Bax, because a conversation, Cabinet went over and visited last year with a young man, I think he was, Aiden was a sophomore last year, that he asked to meet with us, because he thought of some policy changes for the district. And we, a lot of them, because of the new buildings, were going to be changed naturally, as far as, I say policy changes, but they were more structural changes on things that the buildings themselves were changing. But he did bring up some very good points. But I think that you've hit on something that we need to address. What we're working on right now with staff is just really looking at biases and looking at the way of thinking and how we all work together and do it and move forward and do it in, I don't want to use the word correct, but do it in the appropriate manner where we're, you know, a team and looking at equity across the board. And that, the neat thing is, is as Paris Smith said when we were looking at this, it isn't always just about anti-racism as much as about looking at equity in education across the board. And that's why we titled it that. And I think we're working with students as well as adults, and there's a lot of things, but policy is part of that.
Right, you're right. This does not, in my mind, this does not, what this committee's reviewing and acting on is not necessarily limited to just racial inequity.
Right.
I mean, this is, this is looking at, at the entire spectrum. And, you know, I guess if we're going to spend the time to do it, then I would want it certainly that broad.
Yep. Yep. A lot, a lot of great dialogue today. It was, it was really neat to watch. And I would say that the number one thing I got from today is the need for everyone to be vulnerable and to be able to be honest with themselves. And it was neat to watch today, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. P is Board of Education Reports. Do I have any reports or any discussion from the Board of Education?
Elaine?
No.
No, do, no, I?
No. Okay. Moving on. We have no executive session tonight. Okay. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One other thing before we go.
Oh, what? Okay.
Friday, let's beat Midview.
That's, that's board discussion. You missed that.
Let me go back.
Actually, I think that should be a policy. Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mike Gebhardt, second by Elaine Segwin. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye. We are adjourned.